Welcome, everyone, to tonight's school board meeting of the Hudson School District. If you could please rise for the... Pledge the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, because we have a number of requests to speak, and we have a hard end for the time of 6:15 to move to our posted annual meeting, we will then come back out of recess after the annual meeting and continue with the regular board meeting. We will move citizens' requests to speak to second, and we will, because we need to get Bonnie's financial report in this meeting before it can close.
Okay, well, thank you. So this is the annual report that we provided, and we went over at the Committee of the Whole. We're going to go over briefly, starting with the budget assumptions. We're almost there. So this year's budget, the state increased revenue limit calculation to $325 per pupil. State per pupil aid remain the same at $742 per pupil. We did get an increase in special ed categorical aid, which is estimated to increase to 42%. It's currently about 30%. The 2025-26 equalization aid estimate is a decrease of around $750,000 for this upcoming school year. We will get our final aid calculation October 15th. This aid is tied to student enrollment, increased property value growth in the district, and the distribution aid formula to all districts throughout the state. So really, we don't have any say in that. That is the allocation that's provided to the district. The estimated mill rate will remain level this year at 8.21, so no increase from last year. Overall valuation is estimated to increase 4.4%. Property value increased 6.69% last year. The state average this year is predicted to be 8.07%. Again, that will be finalized in November. The district has made general operating budget staffing reductions estimated at about $842,000 for this current school year. And over the past three years, the district has reduced over $2.7 million in positions due to declining student enrollment and budget constraints. Employment settlements have been built into the budget. All settlements have been finalized for the 25-26 school year. Based on community feedback, the district has or is in the process of reducing our footprint. We have formally accepted an offer on the UU property. It's anticipated that the sale will close during the 25-26 school year, and this will reduce district footprint and add property to the community tax base. The Administrative Service Center has also been currently listed for sale, and the district is currently, on Friday, going to move over to our new office at the Hudson Middle School. Again, this will also reduce the district footprint and add property to the community tax base. So those were our assumptions when we made our budget. And then on pages 16 through 19 of the handout is the budget that we did put in the paper. We presented at the Committee of the Whole and are asking the Board for approval for the 25-26 school year. This is our preliminary budget. We'll bring this back in November, either the end of October, early November, for final approval, once we have our equalization aid.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie. Any questions? Hearing none? Do we have to... Motion just go on. Okay, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
Thank you, Maria. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, with Brian. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none. That passes. We will now move on to the second part. Since we have a number of citizens' requests to speak, we'll move that even on, it is on an agenda item, we'll entertain those comments now. I'll remind people that a public comment is for input only. It is not a question and answer session, a time for debate or a dialogue session. Members of the school board will not respond directly to public comments that are made at this meeting. No specific action will be taken at this meeting in response to comments that are made or issues that are raised. During the public comment period, if the Board determines that action is appropriate, the action will occur at a future board meeting. A district representative may follow up with you after the meeting. The Board Chair will recognize one speaker at a time. Only those speakers who are recognized will be permitted to speak. Individuals who interfere with or interrupt the Board or the proceedings may be directed to leave. Personal attacks on any individual, including any other speaker, during the public comment session are unacceptable. Persistence in making such remarks will end the individual's ability, or excuse me, opportunity to address the Board and may result in the individual being directed to leave. So with that, we'll move on, and I'll call up names. Julie Baker. Oh, I'm sorry. Because of the number of recipient, or number of speakers, we will go with two minutes for each comment. Megan Katine, thank you.
Thank you for letting me come and speak today. My name is Julie Baker. I'm a resident of Hudson, Wisconsin. I had three kids that went through the district. All are out and graduated as of this time. I'm bringing up the topic of the Hudson School District policy that was adopted on August 11th, 2025. This is Rule Number 860, which is the School Visitor Procedures, Subsection B. This subsection, this subsection is under, the title of it is "Special Requirements Related to Registered Sex Offenders Visiting the Schools." And I have a few things to show. As far as I have found out, I went back as far as 2017, but I have found this person here who happened to work for Catalyst Sports that probably had some dealings with people in the Hudson School District, just recently arrested. This was July 28th, 2025. I will not name names. You can all go on the Internet and find these people yourself. The next one is the fifth-grade teacher here in Hudson. This is August 18th, 2025. This person has also been charged with four felony counts with child endangerment and causing mental harm to child, child enticement, sexual misconduct by school staff. We have this one. This one is October 8th, 2024. This is another former teacher that stood trial for alleged relationship with a fifth We have another one here. This is May 22nd, 2018. Hudson soccer coach sent graphic Snapchat pics to students.
Ma'am, you're over two minutes. Spoke quite a bit. Do you have a quick point to make?
Yep, I do have a quick point. The last one is my child's predator. He does have kids in the school district, and I just want parents to know he will be getting out in 2027. I asked the school board to look at their policy and block this individual from being able to come into the schools.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Yes. Thank you.
Next, we have Scott Ellingson.
First of all, I want to thank you all for the, all the time that you've put into the incredibly difficult decision-making process with the possible school closures, your transparency, and for the community forum that you're having next week. We all really appreciate that. The Hudson Education Association strongly urges you to reconsider your previous vote and keep both Holton and Willow River Elementary Schools open. At the very least, please keep at least one of them open. We believe that this is best for our school district. Because being able to squeeze everybody into four buildings doesn't mean that is the best thing to do. Closing two schools would be a huge change that would have a ripple effect throughout the entire district. Many non-Holton or non-Willow families don't realize how they will be impacted until rebounding is completed. Speaking of rebounding, if you close one school and rebounding is done well to set up all schools for success, you should, you shouldn't have to do that process again until well beyond the next referendum. Clearly, absent a Madison miracle, and given that our recent referendum is non-recurring, we'll have to go back to the voters in 2030, no matter what you do. 4K builds our district and is a big part of our future growth. We want to have room to grow as many buildings as is feasible. If that state changes, if the state changes 4K to an all-day program, we want to be ready for that growth, too. Efficiency and equity are not just about class size. I applaud your efforts for that. Special education is not efficient nor cost-effective, but we don't penalize our special education students for their diverse needs. We are happy and proud to serve their needs. If only one school closes, some say we'd be pitting one school against the other. If you closed two, you'd be pitting four schools against two. Closing one school would save 1.7 to $2 million operating costs per year. With an $80 million budget, I'm confident that Bonnie and the rest of you can guide us well, whatever decision you make, okay? Hudson's charm and strength and future is in its community neighborhood schools. We can make this work with at least five elementary schools. Let's roll up our sleeves, think outside the box, and move forward. Six is best. Five is better than four. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Scott. Next, we have Keegan McConaughey.
I'm just here on behalf of the school closure. I appreciate the words he just shared, and I, I'm trying to find the words for this. I'm a Holton grad. I'm fourth generation. My son's, the last of which is in fifth grade out there, fifth generation. I grew up in Holton. Holton is a unique community, and I don't want to say it's better than Willow. I'm not pitting the two schools against each other. I'm just here to try and understand where we go from here. There's developments going up in Holton. I know we look at numbers, we talk about growth. Holton is still growing. It's unique. It's got three-acre minimums. It's a challenge, but I, I've got a brother in a neighboring district. His, my niece and nephew pass four elementary schools to get to school. I had hoped to get a better picture of the budget. I, from what I understand, the bus is a significant budget impact for the school. If they're only going to go to North Hudson, but then you got to push kids out of North Hudson, I don't know how the boundary works, stuff like that. I just, I look at the uniqueness of Holton, and if that school goes away, what happens to the community out there? Like I said, there's developments going in. My parents are about to move out of their house, possible families moving in. And if, if a school's closed and their family's looking at busing these significant distances, I remember my high school was right here. This never existed. I had an hour-long bus ride going home at the end of the day. As an older student, it was okay, but I look at elementary-age kids, and putting them on a bus for 20, 30 minutes, much longer, just, I have more memories as a elementary student than I do as a high school student. Those years are critical. And if you're going to start busing students further, I just wanted to share my thoughts for, for you to take into consideration. I may be unique in the number of generations I've been here and that, but I mean, I guess there are those of us out here. I've got neighbors that are looking at their kids going there, and I wanted to share my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. McConaughey. Andy, Andy Reimschmidt Schneider? I'm sorry, I'm making that one really bad. Too many letters for me, I guess.
I'm Andy Reiman Schneider. I'm a Holton dad. So the closures mean a lot to us. We're new to the community as of three years ago, but I have a kindergartner and a first grader, so it's passionate to us. But what I wanted to know, or I guess ask, bring up, I do mortgages for a living, and so what I've been seeing in the Holton School District as a whole, but also in St. Joseph Township, there are a ton of developments, just like Mr. McConaughey just pointed out. Bonnie brought up the UU property. That's going to be closing here in the next school year. There are 500 homes posted to go there. You know, that's going to be a lot of families, a lot of kids. Just like Mr. Ellingson said earlier, too, you can maybe squeeze these kids into four buildings, but what happens when those 500 homes are built there? There's another builder in Hudson that has, they own the land right now. They're putting 300 homes in there in the next couple of years. That's just two developments that I know of. I know of several more that might be 30 here, 20 there, but I think it's reasonable to think there's going to be a lot of people moving into the community with kids, a lot of family. Where does that put us in a couple of years? We're talking about closing schools now. I grew up in Stillwater. They closed two of their elementary schools. Now they had to acquire new property. They're building another new building for a new elementary school. How's that going to look for the budget? It just, I want to make sure we have the future foresight, which I know is hard to do, but we've got to look ahead. We can't solve a problem that's right now. We've got to see where our future heads. As far as St. Joseph goes, with our three-acre minimums, that's what people want. People want space. They're moving over from Minnesota. They're moving into our area because it's very desirable. So I just, like I said, wanted to bring up that point on, on what I'm seeing in my life every day.
Thank you, Andy. The Kessler kids.
I'm a fifth grader at Holton Elementary. I have two younger siblings who also go there, and one who will. If we close both Willow River and Holton Elementary, the classes will have more students, which makes it harder for some kids to learn. It also affects my brothers and their friends, who would go to different schools and be split up. One of my favorite things about Holton Elementary is the community, and I don't want to give that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sam Kessler, and I'm in Holton Elementary in third grade. This year, in third grade, there's 20 students, including me. It is exhausting. If four schools are closed, all of the classes will be big like mine.
My name's Jack, and, and I like my teachers in my school. I'm in first grade, and I do not want to have to go to another school. I love Holton Elementary.
Thank you. And Kristin, you have something to say?
I do. Thank you. Good evening. I'm a mom of three current Holton students and one future Raider class of 2040. She was here and now has a voice compared to when she was a baby attending these meetings. I'm a logical thinker. I look at all the data. I try to make evidence-based decisions in work and life. I think that the data clearly demonstrates the trend of declining enrollment on the district overall. The budget deficits are also clear. I don't deny the facts. Past decisions on spending and inadequate state funding have led us to the point where closing a school and reducing unutilized spots is the Board's main strategy to balancing our budget. As I said in my emails, the decision should not be based on fear, emotions, or nostalgia. It should not be based on the fear of pitting two schools against each other, or the fear of upsetting the community more than once. We don't have to just rip off the Band-Aid. As our elected Board, you need to collect as much data as possible to weigh the impact of your decision on not just the budget, but on the quality of education our schools provide. You need to look at the impact for not just the 2026 through 2028 school years, but for the future of our students and community. While I understand the demographic trends, past studies that drove redrawing elementary boundaries predicted wrong in the past. If we could look ahead to the future, we would see clearly what was the right decision, but we can't do that. So given the uncertainty and the potential for future development in the St. Joseph area, I ask the Board to take a conservative approach. Let us not be short-sighted and close two schools, only to regret it down the road like Stillwater. I'm certain we will not be able to pass another referendum in the next few years for capital or operations, having been someone very involved in holding signs, and, and we passed that by six votes. So I don't think we'll have that opportunity soon. Let's take a conservative approach to monitor the impact of closing schools on capacity, enrollment, class sizes, annual cost savings, the budget, student learning, busing, staffing. Then we can monitor the evolving development and demographic trends. Each time I've come to the Board, I've cautioned about being short-sighted. I encourage the Board again to avoid making a hasty decision, to weigh the impact of the options on the table of closing one or two schools. Make a conservative decision that protects the quality of education today, but also protects the future of education and our community. Thank you for supporting our students and our schools.
Thank you, Kristin. We have Dane. Dane Nordby? Dana, sorry.
Hi, my name is Dana Norby. I am also a Holton resident, and my child started at Holton Elementary last year. I love Mrs. Kessler's fact-based approach, and I love the kids. Thank you for doing that. I'm more speaking from my heart, and I just learned about the meeting last minute, otherwise I would have looked nicer than this. But I want to urge you to reconsider closing Holton Elementary. We moved a year ago from Plymouth, Minnesota, where we were at a school of over 1,000 kids. We had seven first-grade, second-grade, third-grade classrooms, every classroom. My daughter hated it. We moved to the country to get space and small schools, and we love our school. And splitting up these kids, they're at a tiny school, they grew up together in this tiny school, splitting them up is just heartbreaking for me to see happen. Not only that, but my daughter is already traumatized. The buses are packed this year, so in the bus rides are excess of 30, 40 minutes home for a school that's two miles away from us. I can't imagine what it's going to be like for these kids if they have to bus even further. I don't know why the state guideline says an hour is okay. It's not okay for little kids to sit on buses that long. So they're going to go now from a small school to packed buses to packed schools. We moved here to get away from all of this, and more people are moving here. My friends, our families, they want to have their kids in the country. I don't believe that all these homes are selling to people without small kids. That's not what I'm seeing in my neighborhood, and I don't, I think the trend will continue. I'm just urging you to think twice about closing Holton Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Tepper-Smith.
I have five kids in the district, one currently in Holton, and the other four have aged through. Holton Elementary is far more than just one of the top-performing schools in the entire state of Wisconsin. It's a community, and it's a place where we teach our kids how to function as part of a community. We lost a partner to a drunk driver back in 2022. Two of our children had just started their first year in public school, having been homeschooled before then. As soon as the teachers and staff had learned what had happened, there was a huge outpouring of love and support and encouragement, a whole social safety net that we never anticipated having. It helped us immensely just to be able to keep going day by day. Closing this elementary school doesn't make sense in a myriad of logical reasons, but it also doesn't make sense from a community standpoint. If we close Holton, the entire district will be worse for it in ways that are both quantifiable and not. Thank you.
Thank you. John Dolan.
John Dolan, Hudson parent, and I'm here to advocate to keep Holton Elementary open in the face of current budget challenges. I was at the board meeting earlier this year when the past board critiqued and borderline criticized the parents of Hudson for not organizing better to get the past operating referendum passed. So what did we do? We heard the call, and we met the challenge. We organized, and Holton parents specifically took key leadership roles of getting the operating referendum passed, even when our student body is the smallest in the entire district. We delivered when the district needed us. This was despite the fact, the knowing that our school, that, or sorry, that most of the referendum would go to other schools' budgets, and our school was still at risk of closure. This was also in the face that Holton was specifically excluded from the past Capitol referendum in favor of building a new gym, media center, and media center at a different school. Since then, and for many years, really, our kids and teachers have also delivered for the district and continue to do so. We are the top-ranked school in the district, and our kids deliver some of the best scores in the entire, in the entire state. In addition, our township has also delivered. Holton has the most stable enrollment in the whole district as an, as a true outlier compared to the enrollment trends at all of the other schools, all of them. Holton is the only outlier. The district is facing a potential $8 million budget shortfall without the referendum. Closing Holton can't solve this problem. Holton specifically is literally the smallest operating cost of any school in the district and the least beneficial to the budget if closed. Closing schools also won't save the problem. Even if you close both Holton and Willow, and the referendum ends, because it's non-renewable, the district is still facing $4 million in costs that have to be renewed, that have to be removed. The only options are to cut costs at all schools, programs, and additional staff benefits. Or you can come back to taxpayers again and ask us for our support again to rise to the challenge in a few years to support a new referendum. Please don't make a short-sighted decision and take away 149 years of history in Holton based off this short-term decision. Don't take away our school when we delivered when the district needed it.
Thank you. Eleanor Alexander.
Okay, first of all, thank you for letting us speak. I apologize if my remarks are not as organized as I would like them to be. I didn't realize speaking was an option today, so I frankly, frantically wrote some notes down, so apologies if I'm not as well-spoken as I would like to be. Okay, so my husband and I and our two small children moved here from South Minneapolis about a year and a half ago. One of the big draws was the wonderful schools here. I appreciate the data that you guys provided in that Google Drive. I think those were files uploaded by Nick. I was surprised when I looked at that data, especially the enrollment data, to see that we aren't at an unprecedented enrollment low. We're actually very close to where we were in 2001, but granted, I understand that in 2001, we had one less school. What concerns me about that is, like I said, I'm getting caught up to speed since I'm new here, but it appears to me that enrollment in the early 2000s was growing, growing, growing at a very quick pace. It was anticipated to do so, so Rivercrest was built. Three years later, enrollment dropped, declined, declined, declined. So we now find ourselves with essentially, you could look at it as an extra school, a surplus of a school. So I see, in addition to the budget, reasons why we're kind of in this situation. What I want to, and similar theme to many people here, is caution against a quick and potentially over and irreversible reaction if we close both schools, because trends are not infinite, trends are cyclical. We are on the precipice of a potential turn in the housing market due to the 18-year housing cycle. If the housing market crashes and prices finally come down, everyone cross your fingers, but we will see millennials buying houses in droves because they can finally afford to leave their apartments and their starter homes. We are also seeing, at least from my personal experience, sorry, I'm trying to talk fast. My block alone had two children three years ago. Since then, it is up to five children and two young couples, who I think are an underrepresented voice here, people who don't have kids or have young kids who aren't even aware that this is really happening. Two of those couples have bought houses on our block vacated by octogenarians, and another house on the block is about to do the same. So our block alone with 12 houses could go from two children to 10-plus children in the next five years. So I children in the next five years. So I totally understand, like, if this is necessary and we close it, I hope it is necessary, but I just want to make sure our district is protected in case we do see reversal in trends, which does happen. Trends don't always stay forever. So I would humbly ask that if a school has to be closed, the district consider hanging on to the property for three to seven years. Seven, I know, is probably not feasible, but I researched and most districts encounter the issue of closing schools and then having a enrollment stabilization or spike and then needing more space. That usually happens between three to seven years. So if we could at least hold on to those properties to give ourselves an escape hatch, that would be appreciated by the community.
Thank you, Eleanor.
Thank you for listening to all of us. I had a lot of things written down, but all I can say is hear, hear, because we have heard from parents and from children. We've been here so long, I've seen so many changes, that our kids went to three of the different elementary schools. I know about redistricting, but Holton has become a special place because my grandchildren are there, and I know how it's kind of off in the ether somewhere, but it's a really important, important part of St. Joseph Township. And I think, like everyone else, that being short-sighted is not the best thing to do. And I have a heart for Willow River as well, because that's a community where they support the other schools that are nearby, like St. Pat's and Trinity. And I think if we can make use of the space, even parts of it, just use a little creativity so we don't have kids bust so far and squish so tight. Thank you.
Thank you. Colin Marnock. Hope that's close.
Thank you for hearing all of us. Put me after kids and the sentiment that they bring and all of the fine talking points that people have had so far, having to rearrange some of the prepared notes that I've had. My name is Colin Marnock. My wife Sarah and I have lived in the Holton district for four years now. We moved here from the cities, specifically looking to Holton because of the school. We have a seven, five, and three-year-old, second grade, kindergarten, and a three-year-old who desperately wants to go to Holton Elementary with his older brothers. I'm going to, I'm going to talk about three quick points, most of which have been discussed tonight, but a little different perspective. The first is the referendum that passed in April. The second is the proficiency standards that were discussed at the August 25th School Board Open Session, Working Session, and the impact that increased class sizes would have on that. And the third is another talking point that has been discussed here tonight, and the prudency in making decision on whether to close one versus two. First, the referendum. Understanding that previous referendums have failed by percentage points of 2%, 3%, 4%, this referendum passed, and regardless of whether it passed by six, six votes or seven votes, it passed. The spirit of its passage was to keep the schools open. I understand the idea of the misinformation that was out there related to passing the referendum would keep the schools open. We, as an electorate, understood that the district's language was, "A yes vote may keep the schools open." A yes vote is not guaranteed to keep, to keep the schools open, but a no vote certainly would have sealed the school's fate. So by voting yes, the electorate turned out and voted yes, clearly sending a message to the school board that they wanted to keep the schools open. The proficiency, is that, is that my two minutes?
It is.
Phew, I'll, I'll, I'll wrap up. From a proficiency perspective, it was discussed 3% versus more. I 100% agree with Mrs. Gerlach that it should be far greater than a 3% year-over-year increase, but that's a conversation for a different day. If you jam kids into schools, increase school sizes, you may very well decrease those proficiency standards. You could be the school board who closes schools in a short-sighted way, being penny-wise and pound-foolish, trying to save money when, if, when we see an increase in school size, class sizes again, the costs for capital expenditures to increase the existing schools will far outweigh the money that was saved. So I implore you to be the school board that votes with the community in keeping the schools open and increasing proficiency standards, and I implore you to keep Holton Elementary open. Thank you so much.
Hi, good evening. I'm Justine Lindgren. This is my husband Nick and our son Landon. Four years ago this October, we moved from St. Louis Park, Minnesota, out to Holton, Wisconsin, and it has been the biggest blessing for our family and our kids. We have a fourth grader at Holton Elementary, a third grader at Holton Elementary, and this is Landon, and he just started kindergarten at Holton Elementary. This school is special. We are pleased, we're asking you from the bottom of our hearts, not just to look at pennies and dollars and savings, but what's right for the community, what's right for families, and what's right for our children. I have friends in Minnesota who have, their third grade classes are 33 students in one class. Their bus rides are over 90 minutes. I feel like it's just very, very short-sighted, and I know you guys have been, since we moved here four years ago, we've heard rumors, and now being Holton, as our community, we've heard that it's always been in the rumblings, but it never has happened. And I just, I just really hope that you just take a pause and see what's coming this way, because everyone here that you're hearing from Holton, we're from Minnesota. People are moving with kids. It's cheaper in Wisconsin than it is in Minnesota. I'll tell you that much. It is. Property taxes, maybe not, but everything else has been. And people are catching on. They're catching on to our good school districts, and I just, I just really, really hope that you guys aren't acting too premature. And this little guy has something to say.
I want Holton to be safe, so we couldn't move and make, like, a lot of money. I want Holton to stay open.
And I'll just add that we moved out here, number one reason, because of the Hudson District, and I feel like closing two, if not one, school, it's not how we grow, it's not how we improve, it's not how we keep what this district has sustained and ranked in the, in the, in the state. It actually has exact opposite effect, effect by closing two schools. Not only do I feel, but I know that it'll put us into an academic decline slowly and then rapidly. Thank you.
If we can keep it to two minutes, we can still hit our deadline for going with our posted meeting. So Erin, if you'd like to speak.
Thank you for the last-minute entry and opportunity. Sitting here, I, I'm not trying to pit two schools against each other. I've heard Holton, and I've know wonderful families that have children and families that have gone through Holton. I'm here to represent Willow River. Also, from Minneapolis, I moved here with my husband, as he is a graduate from EP Rock to middle school to high school. My mother-in-law was a high school student at Willow River before it changed. And so I think the big implore is to, I have a seven-year-old and a four-year-old, so one at Willow River currently, doing cheer camp in the gym right now. And as a die-hard Minnesota, die-hard Minneapolis student, it was hard to come to a place that I didn't know, the small, but the community has opened itself. Willow River has been amazing, the community has been amazing, but the Hudson School District is so strong that I would implore that, as the Education Association said, "Six is best, five is better, four, I don't think will be sustainable." So, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll take a recess, prepare for the annual meeting, which starts at 6:30, and then after that meeting is over, we will come back to finish this meeting that is on the agenda. Nick? Thank you. And we'll take off. We're moving to reports. So back-to-school updates with Nick.
Yep, just a real brief back-to-school update. Had a real smooth start to the back, back-to-school start of the year. It's been great having kids back in our buildings, staff back in our buildings. You know, wish that the construction would have been 100% done, but I guess we can't have, can't have everything, but it has been a very good start to the year. We had a great back-to-school staff, set of meetings that I think, you know, Bob, you and, you and Maria were a part of, and got to see that, and so it was fun seeing staff involved. We've already had the governor in our, you know, two of our buildings this year, so it's been kind of a, kind of a busy two weeks as we are rolling into the third week of the year. As I move into the next update, which is the enrollment update, and I know normally Andrea will give you the enrollment update on, Tim, on the screen. So this is our most current enrollment update. We try to do this, kind of, we'll probably do it for at least another meeting or two, and then as far as adding it to the meetings, but you can see kind of where we're sitting as it relates to enrollment in the different buildings. We're currently at 1,940 students. The actual Third Friday count in September will be coming up in two weeks, about a week and a half, which will be the actual formal count. As you can see, you know, Rivercrest, we've, we're still kind of flirting with that 27, 28, and 3rd and 5th grade, putting some additional things in place, working with staff on some of those pieces. Anything that's in green is underneath, or under class-sized guidelines. We have one that's, need to adjust. Willow River's fourth grade did jump above class-sized guidelines, so I need to change that from green to, to no color there. And then a while back, the board asked, you know, can you have it be a darker color if it's more or less under the class-sized guideline, so you can kind of see how that, how that shakes out. You know, one of the things that's a little bit alarming for us when we look at this, our first grade class has dropped below 300. That'd be probably our first class below 300 in potentially 20-plus years. So it's kind of concerning. As we look at that kindergarten, just above 300, as we look at those, as we look at those different components, when you go into the middle school and high school, we keep, you know, kind of keep, keeping tabs. Middle school's sitting at about 1065, the high school's sitting about 1,700, as we look at grades nine through 12 and grades six through eight, as we work through here. You know, they, one of the things we always remind people is, usually it's not, we tend to get the ads early, and then the kids that, that don't show up or that are attending other, they're essentially attending other districts, we don't quite know to take them off the rolls until we get the request for their records. And so those have started to roll in, especially now that some states are just starting last week, is, and requesting those records and getting caught up. So that is the enrollment analysis as of, actually, I think it was as of the end of last week, is what we were looking at. So the next one on the updates, construction report. Starting off at North Hudson, you can see that the vast majority of it's done. The one, the first picture at North Hudson is the new cafeteria space. They're finishing that up, should be done in the next two weeks. That was one of the last spaces to get done. Keep rolling on down, your front drop-off area, which has gone very, very well, once we got everybody kind of in the right direction with North Hudson and, and kind of following the, the new design. I think we've been out there to kind of see how things are going, averaging about five to seven minutes for pickup in the afternoon. So it's been very good in and out. It wouldn't be a construction update without a picture of some bathrooms. As we work through, you can see the new entrance at North Hudson Elementary, and some of the new, another picture of bathrooms. Again, you can never have enough pictures of bathrooms, apparently. As you work through EP Rock Elementary, you can see the new controlled entrance and the new main office area that we're kind of, they're finishing some things up, new windows and metal panel. You can see the last picture on this page is the art room. That's one of the last rooms that, that are still in the process of being done, should be ready to go by the end of next week, should be good. So they're using a different room for art right now. Media Center, they're finishing up getting those different components done and the built-ins, built-in cabinetry, things along those lines. You can see kind of some updated pictures of some different spaces that still are a couple of weeks out. It's the center kind of column area. It would be like the original, I think, old gym part of EP Rock through the, the south wing of EP Rock, and so that should be done in the next couple of weeks. So they're moving very quickly. When you look at the middle school and the district office, you're starting to see some of the, some of the windows and things going in at the district office, because the middle school is, is primarily complete. So a lot of these pictures are district office pictures that will be moving into the end of this coming, this coming week, as Bonnie said. However, our next, I believe our next two board meetings are still scheduled to be here at the high school, and then eventually we'll get to a meeting at the new space, but we're working through. So construction is, you know, we're working to get it all finished up and get those things done, but it, it still has probably about two, you know, 1% to 2% that still needs to be done. There's some outside landscaping that needs to be done and cleaned up, and so we're, we're kind of working through some of those components as well. So I'll turn it over to Tara for her seclusion and restraint report.
Thank you, Nick. What you're looking at in front of you is our annual seclusion and restraint report. This is by law required to be to the school board by October 1st, and then we report the data to DPI by December 1st. So what you're looking at is the 24, 25 school year. It's our total number of seclusions, restraints, or seclusion and restraints. That first box there on the top left is the total number of seclusions. You have your total number of restraints, and then your total who had both, a seclusion and restraint at the same time. On the left-hand side of the column, this is for Gen Ed students as well as students with disabilities. We have to divide that out. You will see there were zero students, Gen Ed students involved in any kind of seclusion or restraint. However, on the right side, it breaks down the number of seclusions for students on IEPs, how many students were involved. So you can see 56 seclusions, totaling 11 different students, 40 restraints, 12 students, and then 23, both a seclusion and restraint at the same time, involving a total of four students. Looking from years past, where we're at, if you scroll down, it breaks it, then the next box is per building. Looking at the table underneath that, you will see over the years, our numbers of total incidents going back to 1920. We had over 300 incidents to the 24, 25 school year. We're sitting roughly similar to last year, around 74 incidents, and then the numbers that I just shared. It's a total of 18 students with disabilities that's affected by seclusions or restraints.
Mr. President?
Yes, Megan.
Could you just share a general definition of what seclusion is and what restraint is, or what happens? I know it's not going to be the same for everybody.
Yep, I have the official definition. So when we're looking at seclusion restraint, we're looking at any time there's a clear precedent or present or imminent risk of safety to themselves or others. So that has to be very clear, very imminent, and right there, right now. When we're looking at seclusion restraint, looking at just seclusion, seclusion's the involuntary confinement of a student apart from other students in a room or an area where the student is physically prevented from leaving. We have to remain constant supervision. We also have to document the time, the duration, from the beginning to the end of the seclusion. Questions on that before I go to restraint? Okay. Physical restraint means a restriction that immobilizes or reduces the ability of a student to freely move his or her torsos, arms, legs, or head. You need specific training, and in our district, we are trained CPI, which is through the Crisis Prevention Institute. Yeah?
Mr. President?
Molly.
I just had a question, looking at the various school locations, the number at Willow River Elementary, is that because of the population that is there, or can you explain a little bit what's behind that?
If you look at the total number of students, let me pull that back up. It's not necessarily the population, but... It's not necessarily the population, but we're looking at only, was there three students? Oh, we're looking at Willow. That was, all of those 22 total were only two different students. So just depending on sometimes we're, without speaking to individual student needs right now, the makeup of different students and buildings and their needs, it just happened to be two specific students there that needed some very specific interventions.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Moving on, Nick?
Yes, so just want to go over each kind of department, going over some of our district goals, so everybody can kind of see where we're heading for the 25, 26 school year, so I'm going to turn it over to each of the directors as they have their respective areas. So I'll turn over Shannon and start.
Okay, I have the first two, under educational excellence, academic achievement. We're looking for 67% of students in grades 3 through 11 will demonstrate proficiency in English Language Arts reading, and 73% of students in grades 3 through 11 demonstrating proficiency in mathematics.
Tara?
And then you're looking at the same from the work session, looking at the English Language Arts, and then the math from the three different subgroups. We're looking at students with a disability, students of color, and economically disadvantaged students.
Mr. President?
Yes, Megan.
I know I ask this question a lot, but just could someone speak to proficiency and what that means? Like, if you're not proficient, that doesn't, in English Language Arts, it doesn't mean you can't read at all, but just speak a little bit about the standards.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit to it, and then I'll turn it over to Shannon as well. So, you know, proficiency is right around 60th percentile, somewhere around there, and so percentile and percentages are not one in the same. So the average student in the state of Wisconsin would be in the 50th percentile, and because of where Wisconsin sets the cut score related to proficiency, you can have a child that can read and can read at grade level and can do all these things, but according to the statewide exams, are not considered proficient on statewide exams. And a lot of it has to do with, because you basically have to be in the top 40% on the exams in order to be considered proficient, and so that's one of the challenges. Some people will look at this and go, 73% proficient in math, that means 27% of our kids aren't proficient, does that mean 27% of our kids can't do math? No, that's not what it means. It just means they're not in the top 40, you know, basically 40% of kids across the state. Even at 73% proficient math, that puts us in the 93rd percentile, so puts us in the top 7% of all school districts in the state. And at the 67% proficient in reading, it puts us in the top 7% also. And our goal, like we talked about earlier, is to get to the top 5% or the 95th percentiles we worked through. I don't know, Shannon, if there's anything you'd like to add about those?
Well, the only thing that I was going to add is at grades 3 through 8, that is measured by forward, and then grades 9 and 10, it's the pre-ACT exam, and 11 is the ACT exam. And we do have long-term goals set for 70 and 75 respectively, and that would put us in the 95th percentile.
Erin?
I have a question. Why are the students of color, the baseline, only 44%? Can somebody speak to that?
Yeah, so the baseline would be how they did this past year on the exam, so baseline percentage on any of them would be how they performed this last year, and so then the goal would be to increase that by 3% as well. So baseline is most recent test and how they performed.
So we're dividing kids up based on their race or their color on these tests and saying, this group, we want them to do a little bit better? I mean, is that what I'm understanding by this number? I just...
Yeah, so these three subgroups are things that the state looks at, and it's tied back to our state report cards and everything else. So these are the subgroups that we look at, students with disabilities, students of color, and students that are economically disadvantaged, those would be students that we would consider free or reduced lunch, and so the state has us measure those things because they consider those gap areas for all districts across the state, and so they have identified that, and so yes, we are looking to see how our kids and those that happen to be in those three subcategories, how they perform. We used to also look at ELL, which would be English Language Learners, and the reason we no longer keep that as one of our goals is because it tends to be such a transient population, and we may, depending on how, who moves into the district and when they move in, you can see huge fluctuations in percentage of students proficient in that areas, and so it wasn't a great measure that way. But baseline would be, we would look at all students of color and what percentage of them are proficient in our district, and that's what that baseline. Same thing with students with disability or students that are economically disadvantaged. And our goal is to close that gap so that all of our students are achieving at the same level, regardless of disability, regardless of race, regardless of socioeconomic status.
Thank you.
Yep.
If there are no other questions, that'll do it for reports, and we'll move on to topics for discussion and possible action. And Nick, are you taking those for Andrea or...?
Yeah, I can take this for Andrea. You have consent agenda right off the bat, so you need a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve? Anyone?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kate?
You're looking for a motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I move approval of the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officers be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $6,561,144.61.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Molly. Any questions? Then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the motion passes. Moving on to personal hires, oh, that's far, are we moving to expenditures or what?
Safeway bus contract.
Safeway bus contract, okay.
Yep. So the Safeway bus contract, this, the contract mirrors what the board talked about when we negotiated in closed session, but you have to act on that contract in open session, and so the administration's recommendation is to adopt the 7% rate increase for our continuing contract for Safeway Bus Company for the 25, 26 fiscal year. And if you have any questions, you can let me know. Otherwise, the recommendation is to approve that increase so that we can go ahead and get the contract signed with them.
Mr. President?
Erin?
How do we, like, the 7% increase that we're offering them or contracted for them, are they telling us how they're going to utilize that 7%? Is that just to cover their fees, or are we going to see some, you know, we've been hearing from a lot of, a number of people in the district with busing issues and concerns, will that 7% be able to make accommodations for families that have those concerns that we've been hearing?
Well, this is similar to what we went through, you know, in the closed session piece, but now since it's open session, you know, I think the big piece with the 7% rate increase is to help them offset some of their rising labor costs that they have going on, similar to all of us that are kind of experiencing those pieces. We also have been reducing some of the routes, and it helps offset some of the route reductions because we're able to run a little bit more efficiently as our transportation department is up and moving in year two of our, under new leadership in the Transportation Department, and so this isn't necessarily to address a specific concern related to something that a parent brought up, but it is to, you know, work with Safeway on some of their financials and to ensure that we have busing this current year so that we can meet the needs of our kids.
Mr. President?
Yes, Kate.
I just wanted, because we did talk about this as a board, I wanted to kind of discuss what we talked about as well. It was honestly hard for us to look at some, a rate increase because we're already struggling, and so we looked at some of the rates that are in different areas, and they're certainly far higher than ours are, and it's obviously very important to transport our kids back and forth to school safely, so we did go ahead and talk about the 7% increase and obviously have it before us today, but wanted to give people the background on what we talked about.
That's a great, that's a great point, Kate. You know, we did pull comparable contracts across the area, and even with this rate increase, we are still actually paying less than most other districts are paying for transportation as far as per route and things along those lines. And you can kind of see what we pay per route, per day, it's on page two of the memo, and what the new rates would be effective.
Any other questions? Kate, entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the Safeway Bus Company contract increase for the 2025, 26 fiscal year.
Thank you, Megan. Do I have a second?
Mr. President, I second that.
Second from Maria. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, the motion passes. Moving on to long-term, oop, Wasby Regional Meeting, I always...
Yes, you just don't want, you don't want to miss that. So just a heads up to the board that the Wasby Regional Meeting will be coming up, and it'll be in Eau Claire this year. A lot of years it's been in Menominee, but it is going to be in Eau Claire this year on Tuesday, October 28th. We need to get people registered for that. There's presentations, there's recognition, and looking at, in a legislative update and then executive director's report, we tend to send, you know, a decent amount of our board members to that meeting, and we carpool to that. So if you are interested in attending, please let Tim Minor know so we can get those registrations done. It'd be nice to have that done by the end of September as far as the registrations, but just starting to plan is bugging people's ears so they can get it on their calendar if they're wanting to go. So something to keep in mind for October 28th, so.
Okay, let's keep it with Nick for a long-term facilities planning discussion.
All right. Long-term school planning information, so just a couple of pieces, I mean, that we wanted to bring up. I know I wanted to give an opportunity for the board to ask any additional questions they may have, administration or additional information that you would like to see from us in order for you guys to be able to make decisions over the next month or so. I wanted to touch base on a couple of items, though, that has come up in emails. One item people have been asking about, are we sure we have enough space in our buildings? Did go through, Shannon and I worked with principals to go through to make sure that if we ran all four remaining buildings, if the board chose to go with closing two buildings, if we ran them all at full capacity, would we still have room for 4K? And the answer is yes, we would still have room for 4K in all four buildings, and in three of the four buildings, we would have room for 4K and wrap care. In the one building that may be in question this again, if we're running at 100% of occupancy, we wouldn't have that ability, but Hudson Prairie may be a little bit more challenging if we were running all four sections in Hudson Prairie in every grade. We could still have 4K, but might not be able to offer wrap care. Wrap care is that piece where it provides childcare outside of 4K. But we did go through to re-verify, we, you know, do we have enough music rooms, enough art rooms, enough special ed rooms? We went through and just wanted to make sure we had the count on everything so that we could kind of put people's questions, you know, to rest on some of those items. I wanted to make sure that was in there. There was also a question, is it related to special education services related to Trinity and St. Pat's if Willow River Elementary was to close? And I'll turn it over to Tara to kind of give a little bit of background on that.
I sure can. So part of our federal special education funding is we have to spend a certain portion, it's called equitable services, on our students with identified disabilities in our private schools. So it's about, in the last three, four, five years, anywhere between 30,000 and 40,000 that we need to spend on our students with disabilities in private schools. However, those students aren't entitled to FAP, meaning they don't get that free appropriate public education because they're choosing to be parentally privately placed. What that does mean is that $30,000 can be spent on a variety of ways. It could be the teachers in those schools receive professional development training from us, they receive resources, they may receive parents. We are required to have an annual meeting with the administrators of the private schools once a year. We meet, we discuss how we are going to, how they're going to spend those dollars and what that looks like. So I think the important piece is those students who are parentally privately placed are not entitled to receive FAP, meaning they don't necessarily get that kind of whole package of supports and services, if you will. It's just the available dollars we have and how those private schools decide to spend those.
And how that money is spent is decided by the private schools, and in the past, they have chosen to use that money to purchase time from staff members at Willow River to provide special education services. But there is not a, you know, some people have asked, what is the obligation of the district as far as providing those services? And that's, there's not an obligation of the district. The private schools could choose that if they wanted to spend that money, they could spend it on transportation, they could spend it on training, they could spend it on curriculum, as Tara said, but wanted to make sure that that question got answered because there's some information out there that had asked, you know, what happens with children that are, have special needs that have been coming from Trinity and St. Pat's? And we did look this last year, there's been about, a total of about 20 individuals. So sometimes people will make comments like there's streams of kids coming from Trinity and St. Pat's to Willow to receive services, and that's just not an accurate statement.
And that's K-8, too. So that is spread over middle school. Middle school, no one's walking to the middle school. Their way, they're supporting students, and at the middle school looks very different just because of proximity of the building with St. Pat's and Trinity being so close.
Mr. President? Back to the wrap care, are other partners providing that as well as we are?
Yes, yeah, so we have, I don't know, Shannon, if you know all of the community-based partners off the top of your head, but we have worked with, you know, I know Trinity and St. Pat's both offer part of our 4K programming, Bethel's part of our 4K programming. We have, I think, five other community partners as well. So for the portion that kids are receiving 4K, it's a public school, it's free, and so that portion of their day has to be free, but there are other providers that are providing wrap care, and there are providers that provide childcare and 4K services that aren't part of our program. There's the one that's right up by the old Hudson Golf Course, is not part of our program, and also, kinder care is not part of our program either, so.
Mr. President?
Yes, Megan.
You mentioned that Hudson Prairie would possibly be the challenge with wrap care, and...
What was that? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Oh, sorry. You said that Hudson Prairie might be the one school that if we went down to four schools, there would be a challenge with 4K wrap care. Is there a space in the middle school that could be used so kids don't have to be bused? I realize you might not have the answer to that, I'm just...
You know, a lot of it, a lot of it really depends on, you know, it's going to depend on numbers and boundaries and everything else. I mean, so there's a possibility that if not every single grade level has four classrooms, if one of the grade levels only has three sections instead of four, which is a very real possibility, that there would be room in that building for wrap care. It's just, we wanted to make sure we're very clear that if all the buildings were basically running at 100% occupancy, not ideal occupancy, but 100% occupancy, that it would, wrap care would be more challenging at Hudson Prairie to offer that. And just so people understand, I was talking with Sue Hummers, who coordinates our 4K program. We've had 4K, I think, since 2017 is, I think, when we added it. We haven't had the same providers back-to-back years in any of the years since 2017. I mean, we've always had some sections at Willow River, but sometimes we have it at Rivercrest, sometimes we've had it at Prairie, we've had it at North, we've had it at Willow, EP Rock, you know, we've had it at different places, but it hasn't been the same every year. So it has mixed up and moved, as well as our private providers have changed up as well.
Mr. President?
Maria?
Nick, I wonder if you could speak a little bit, I know you and I spoke earlier this afternoon, there've been some questions around the staffing scenarios for the options, and kind of trying to drill in, how accurate do you and the team feel the reductions that have been presented? Hold... have been presented hold true today? Looking at just for example, option two, certified staff totals going down to 20, is that where we think we're going to land? And could you share more about how that number was arrived at? And then the second question would be in relation to class sizes. I know we have class size guidelines, you and I spoke a little bit about that. Can you tell a little bit about, speak to how we drill into that and what the class sizes might look like, given what we know about enrollment projections and how we apply the class size guidelines that are existing?
Absolutely. So there is a document in the Google folder called Base Staffing Scenario. I've referred to it multiple times, it's the 25-26 Base Staffing Scenario that was drafted back on the 5th of, of July. And what we did is we looked at, based on the number of sections we think we would need in order to offer, you know, based on current enrollment, offer everything that we, that we currently have based on the different scenarios. And so you have on the far left, option one is six elementary schools. It was kind of the, the, the current, kind of current situation or baseline. And then as you work across, what you see is how many FTEs we think we need for each of those different things, and then what is the actual reduction? And so when it comes to classroom, classroom teachers, you know, again, it can fluctuate because like, for example, this, this summer, the board decided to add two additional sections at Hudson Prairie in June. And so all of a sudden where we thought we had two fewer, now we have, you know, we have two more. And so it can fluctuate a little bit, but based on what we think, based on our current number of students, we would say this is how many sections it would take, you know, for, if you had four buildings open, or if you only closed Willow, or you only closed Holton, there was the scenario of grade-like elementaries, but that's been kind of taken off the table by the board. But also, the other thing, it's not just classroom teachers, but we also look at instructional coaches, school counselors, media specialists, all of those different components, based on what is the reduction? If you were to, if we were to close buildings, and so that's where you start to get some of those odd numbers, like a .78 or a .3 or things like that. All of those numbers, those staffing levels outside of the regular classroom teachers are done on a, on a, on a formula. And so we figure out about how many sections a PE teacher can handle in a day, how many we, we allot to them. And then we figure out how many sections are in the building, times how many times they have PE. And so we go through and we start to figure out, okay, how many PE teachers then does it take at this building or that building in order to cover it? So some of the things you've heard is, you know, when you get to a four-section building, because we have music three times a week, that you need more than one music room. And people say, well, if you need more than one music room, why don't you need more than one art room? Well, we have, we don't have art as much as we have music, so we can actually have one art room, but we need more than one music room. And so all of that stuff has been taken into account with the buildings as we're counting classrooms and the principals are looking at, do you have space for this, do you have space for that? Then as you go down and you look at the different, you look at the different scenarios, we break it out by administrators, and then we also go into support staff. And each of the scenarios were based on July 2005 numbers, you know, give or take. And, and what we looked at, when we looked at the dollar amounts, we did the average cost of an employee in each of these areas. We didn't look at specific people because depending on how it goes, sometimes you have people leave that are higher cost, sometimes you have to reduce people that are lesser cost, and so we tried to look at the average as you work through there. So, you know, the argument would be that right now, we think it'd be roughly a reduction of about 19 staff members, 19 to 20 staff members, if you were to go down to four elementary buildings, K5. And you can kind of see where we would see the reductions kind of play out as you look at that, and you can see them on the, on the difference, the different scenarios that Tim has up there. That's information the public can look at. I know some people had said, well, that, those, you know, I don't think there's, what about this savings or what about that savings? Included at the bottom is the potential approximate staffing savings you see at the bottom for each of these buildings. Those are, that's with everything built in going into July 5th. And so the only thing I want to draw your attention to is noon duty position. It's a position, not an FTE, and the same thing with media center, media assistants in, down in support staff area. Those are, like, the noon duty is like a two-hour position, so it's not, we're not laying off necessarily, you know, 12 full-time people in that case. It's, when you start to reduce some of those positions, you can, that's where you get, you get the reductions that way. But everything, everything is tied back to average salaries for all these different positions and as you, as we kind of work, work through these different positions. So that was your question as it related to staffing. And so sometimes people say, well, is it this or is that? This right here, this spreadsheet is our best estimate as of right now, or as of July 5th. And, you know, as we get more information, you know, we can make, make adjustments. Then your other question related to class sizes. And so when, when you go to, how did you determine how many sections you need and aren't all the classes going to get much bigger and all of these different components? And the answer to that question is it depends. If you're used to having 13 or 14 in a class, then yes, your class sizes are going to look bigger because the whole point of rebalancing the district and going down is to get closer to our class size guidelines. However, it is not, when we looked at number of sections, our class size guidelines for K2 are 18 to 22, and, and our class size guidelines for three through five are 22 to 27. When looking at current, and again, all we have is our current students, so it would be, when I look at the staffing model, it's if we had to staff our current number of kids in the district based on this. I used 20 students per class in K2 and 25 students per class in three through five as, to kind of break it, to kind of break it down so that it wasn't up against the top class size guidelines. And when you, when you break it that way, you break it down in the number of, and if there was a number of sections, like, let's say it came in at like 15.3 sections, we rounded it up to 16. If it came in at 14.8, rounded it up to 15. And so, you know, just looking at it prematurely, if we were to staff at four buildings based on our current population, average class size in kindergarten would be still 19.1, in first grade would be 19.7, in second grade would be 20.4, in third grade would be 24.9, in fourth grade it would be 24.1, and in fifth grade it'd be 25.1. Now, again, that's, you may have some classes closer to 27, and you may have some classes closer to 23, but, you know, those are, those are the averages in a, in a, in a perfect world. So it's, it's not incre, but if you're used to having smaller classes than that, you know, for example, EP Rock has three sections of 20 in fourth grade this year. And if you're used to having that, now you go up to 24 or 25 in fifth grade, then yes, you could argue that the class size has gone up. Or you could say that currently there are two sections of 28 in fifth grade at Rivercrest. And you would argue that the class sizes go down to 25 based on averaging things out. So I know there are some people putting information out there and putting their own numbers out there, but, you know, this is based on what we currently have in the district as we, as we kind of try to staff based on these models.
Thank you, I appreciate you walking through that.
Yep.
Brian?
Thanks, Mr. President. I have a question about the transition to either five or four schools with, with special education. Hearing some concern about, sorry, this will be a little inartful, but, but a smooth transition that there's certain experts at one school or another and students are used to receiving students and parents, you know, the benefits of that expertise and kind of how would we look at transitioning special education to a smaller footprint?
Turn that over to Tara, she's our expert related to special education.
Expert's a strong word, but, so all students, regardless what building they would end up in, would receive their IEP supports and services. And based on, once we know where they're at in their building and their supports and services, we'll take our staff and divide them amongst the building. All of our teachers in the state of Wisconsin are certified to be CrossCAT special ed teachers. We know we have wonderful teachers in all our buildings, and certain buildings have just a, a long expertise of maybe one disability category versus another, but we will definitely look at providing support, and we currently do now. When we have students show up in other buildings, we use and lean on those expertise in those buildings and give them some release time to support staff and students as they're transitioning to, into buildings.
Thank you. Any other questions related to that?
I would just like to ask, when was the last time that we did a building, like a cost bid for repairs for Willow and Holton?
So the, the last facility needs assessment was done in 2022 as the board was looking at the 10-year facility plan. And at that time, it kind of slated Willow with a little over $18 million worth of needs, and Holton with a little over $5 million worth of needs. You know, those, those costs, it's, it's trying, they, they tried to, I think, inflate them as far as like follow inflation, construction inflation and things like that, because over a 10-year period. But it's, it's hard to know exactly, you know, until you go out to bid. Sometimes you have a real favorable bid environment, things come in five or 10% under what you think they're going to be, and other times you don't have as favorable of an environment. You know, a lot of times people will say, just leave our school alone and just keep it open, and it just doesn't, it just doesn't work that way all the time. You know, an example would be when the chiller was dying at Willow River last year, you know, we don't have a choice, we had to invest over $300,000 in a new chiller at Willow River. You know, there are things like parking lot improvements that need to happen. We have ADA requirements, things along those lines. There are things that are on the deferred maintenance list that the, the, the board is, if they're going to keep buildings open, they, they have to invest more money in these things. And in 2022, when we went to referendum, the conversation was, we don't, you know, at that time, people didn't know, if, they weren't ready to make a decision on closing buildings or keeping buildings open. And, and at that time, I said, well, we have real needs in our buildings, can we at least go to referendum to ask for buildings that you know are going to stay open long-term? And so that's why, that's why we ended up doing that. Now, I do know that, you know, kind of, one of the things that comes enrollment or kind of an offshoot is, people will say, why did, why did we build Willow Rivers, or not Willow River, Rivercrest? And why was it built so big and it's, it's bigger than we needed? And a couple of things I just want to, I just want to point to, and it's in the enrollment tabs, and you can, you can look at the enrollment analysis pieces. I'm just trying to pull it up here. Yeah, enrollment, it's called elementary enrollment history. So you have to understand that when, when the referendum for Rivercrest happened, which was in '06, you know, there were 2,200 students in, in the district, elementary students, and it was continuing to climb. And by all measures, it was, it was going to continue to climb. And it wasn't until when Rivercrest opened in '08, '09 that, and it still didn't hit its peak until '26, let's see, I think we hit our peak in 2011, 2012 with over 2,600 elementary students in the district. In, in '06, I don't believe anybody was forecasting the financial meltdown and, and the crisis that happened. The other thing that nobody has been forecasting and, and, but all of the demographers are saying is a very real thing, is when birth rates dropped after the financial recession, they've never recovered. And they usually do recover within three to five years after a recession historically, and they have never recovered. And so some people ask, why did, you know, why did we build that building so big and, and the board is now just trying to, you know, make up for that? Well, the, the thing is, that building is 17 years old. It's not a building that was just made, you know, three years ago. I don't believe there's anybody sitting on this stage that was involved in that process. But it is also our only elementary school that is south of the interstate. And, and when we rebounded in 2018, we were on pace to, that building was on pace to keep getting bigger and bigger and to exceed its, its capacity. And so we moved kids out of that building because we did have reason to believe the developments were happening on the south side of the district, and the yield rates just didn't turn out the way that they, they were supposed to. And so we purposely pulled kids out of Rivercrest, pushed them north so that we could fill buildings that had space, so that we could make more space in, in Rivercrest to handle any growth on the south side, and it just, it just did not come. If you look at this chart, you can see with the exception of two years over the last 13, we've had a decline in elementary enrollment. And, and it's, if you look at from our peak of 26, of, 26-21 to, we're at 1928 when this was originally down, we're at 1940 right now, it's a drop of 700 elementary students. And so I just, you know, I think there's some information out there that people are pointing out there that is, is not accurate and it's misleading. Go ahead, Erin.
So is there any opportunity to see where we're currently at with Holton? So we just know as a board, I mean, can, I mean, bids don't cost anything, right? People want more money, they're going to come in, they're going to bid a job, and they're going to do a, a good job. Could we get a bid so we know where we would be at if we were to keep that school open?
In order for us to do that, the board would have to, you'd have to hire an architect and engineers in order to get bids and costs associated with that, and then in order to put a bid package together, similar to what we did for the last set of construction projects. Now, as far as like the, to do another facility study of those two buildings, if that's a direction the board wants to go, you can absolutely direct us to do that. I just have not, I haven't heard that up to this point. So we haven't, we haven't done a new facility study, just because there hasn't, there hasn't been anything that's changed material, materialistically related to those buildings as far as, we haven't done a bunch of work to them to knock some things off the list, and they're only becoming more needy, I guess, would be the, the best way, they need more stuff. So would you, I mean, if there's another facility study that you would like us to do with those buildings, that's, that's up to the board, however you guys want to direct us to do that.
I would just like the information on what the costs would be associated with that.
To do a facility study?
Either.
I'm not following, I'm sorry. So either what, what do you, what do you mean?
Either, like the, you said, an architect would have to come in, like, what, what does that cost? Just so we know, like, what does this cost if we have to go down this route and we remain with one of these schools open? So we know what we're getting into, like, I mean, you said that Willow was $18 million and Holton was $5 million, but that was three years ago. So what needs have increased since then? I think it's legitimate to look at that and say, well, this was three years ago, and now you've got X, Y, and Z, that's also really bad. Or are these, to bring them up to code issues? I mean, they're kind of two different, are they, is it facility maintenance or is it like a requirement now? Because buildings have requirements, every time you go to them and, and you update things, there are new requirements that come up, right? I just, I, I find that would be helpful to just kind of know where we're at. I'm not asking to spend the money, I'm just asking what, what the costs associated with looking at that option would be. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just not sure with, you know, like, Holton, for example, the parking lot is in pretty bad condition. They were predicting it would be in.
I agree with that.
What's that?
I agree with that.
So, I mean, they were predicting it needed to be replaced, and it, it needs to be replaced. But, you know, so, I mean, I don't know that you could look at the cost pretty easily on what it costs today to replace the asphalt versus what it, what it was estimated years ago, two years, three years ago. So I, I don't know, you know, many of the things, I, you know, I've heard too in the community, like, well, you don't have to do all this work, you could keep it going for the, well, it's a school that has needs, that has codes, and it has safety concerns that other, you know, entities wouldn't have to worry about, we have to worry about it. So I don't, I don't know if, you know, what has changed at Willow or Holton that would potentially reduce the cost. But I, you know, Nick mentioned Rivercrest, you know, about the need for it at the time, and, and none of us were there. Well, I was, I was part of that push too, and I'm proud that we built Rivercrest, and I'll say that all along, because we still have a large number of kids behind, you know, below South I-94. And what Willow And what Willow, or what Rivercrest taught us, I think, is that you can predict, you can think you can predict the yield rates. And so the yield rates were off so far, and I see it very similar to what people in Holton are saying, is, you know, we've got a lot of developments coming on. We can't guarantee a percentage of how many of those house, homes will have kids, just like we were very surprised in the Rivercrest area, on some of the big developments that did go in, that didn't yield as many students as we expected. So, I think there, there is something to be said for that, is that you, you can't make bold predictions.
Mr. President.
It's two different things. Molly?
Thanks, Mr. President. I just did a quick little, just some thoughts about 18 million, Willow River, that's really hard to say, blah, 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 5 million Holton from 2022, just in general, if you go and do an inflation calculator, it's 19.8 million for Willow River, 5.5 for Holton. Does not take into account construction costs. I looked at another thing that said this year, 5.5% increase, just this year, for non-residential construction costs. I think, I'm wondering if what we could do is, you know, not to give Dr. Olet another job, in a way to kind of do a workaround, is say, hey, Bray Architects, what are you seeing for year over year from 2022 to 2025? What would your ballpark be? That's a phone call or an email, it's not a huge deal, so we can have an idea, rather than going in. And I agree with Erin, we're going to have things that have popped up, that are going to be concerns now that weren't then, but I think we can kind of go with those numbers. They're not going to go down. Right? They're not going to go down. So, that's just my commentary about that.
Mr. President?
Megan?
Yeah, I, I, we know the things that were going to cost money are going to cost more, right? Like, the numbers don't go down usually for what things cost, construction-wise. I think the concerns that I have are these sort of ongoing structural deficits. And so I understand that there are maybe one-time costs to updating some of the schools, but I, I don't see the money in the general fund to do that, so that would require operational referendum, most likely. And, you know, we, we heard a lot of people speak really passionately today about how much they love their schools. I love Willow and Holton, I have a kid at each school. We also heard this summer, two kids come in saying, please let me open enroll at Hudson Prairie and stay with my friends, right? I love Hudson Prairie. I talk to people across the community who have kids in every grade school, who love their grade school. And this is messy, and there's a lot of moving parts. But I, I hope as we continue to have this discussion as a community, we remember that all of our schools are nice schools with wonderful teachers, with great staff, with literally the same curriculum for, you know, English Language Arts and Math. And so there's difference in culture and personality, but I, I worry that we, that sometimes with your own school, you can feel like it's so different and so distinct from the other schools, but there really is a lot of overlap because we're one district. So, I'm kind of going off on a weird tangent here, but to spend, I worry about spending too much time to see what it would cost to update these buildings. But the facilities costs are one thing, but it's the ongoing, every year, operational costs that are hitting us in the budget as well.
I asked a question because I, I just want to make it clear that I, I wasn't proposing that costs would go down, I was actually preparing for an increase of costs and to not be sticker shocked should we travel down that road. Example, $5 million plus inflation. I heard Molly, it was like, you know, let's just call it 6 million at the moment, but let's say we were to vote to just keep that open, and all of a sudden it comes back and, oh, it's 12 million or 15 million. That's what I was asking for specifically, and that would be a problem.
Yeah, I, you know, based on-
Thank you, Erin.
I'm just trying to read the, read the full world report, because there's 375 pages there, 65 pages people can read through. And, and some of the items were, so in the 10-year facility plan, they did add some level of inflation for things that are going out, that weren't going to be done for six, seven, eight years, construction inflation. Holton, the bulk of Holton was to be done in 2023, if it was going to be done, and so, you can kind of see, you would have to add to the Holton numbers essentially inflation from '23 to '25, '26, whatever you want to do. The Willow River, the 18 million at Willow River was to be done in about two more years, so that, that does, you know, according to them, have some inflation in those numbers. And again, it, it is a balance of, some of it is just purely maintenance, and some of it is bringing everything up to the same playing field as all the buildings, you know, type of thing. And so it's trying to find a balance, but most of this is more maintenance items than, it's, it's not adding a gym or things like that, these are, these are more maintenance items. So, I would say, you know, yeah, Holton might be closer to six, and Willow's probably pretty accurate, between 18 and 20, somewhere in there.
I was appreciative of Molly's idea, I would, I would be in favor of if we could just make a phone call and not spend money and just say, hey, where are things at? That would help a little bit, or have them maybe suggest the other things that we might want to look at, and, and just kind of put a set of eyes on it.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. President. One of the pieces with facilities that I've been thinking about, I was, I was on that facilities task force in '22 or '23, whenever it was, and I have a vivid memory of going through our schools, touring them, and it wasn't just, you know, the chiller needs to be replaced and the roof needs to be replaced. I, I remember Holton in particular, because my kids go there. We were looking at one of the special ed facilities, it was, it was maybe for speech impairment or vision impairment, I'm not sure what, but it was, it was a closet in Holton. And what I'm getting to is, you know, if, if we're considering keeping one of these buildings open beyond facility maintenance, which I think is mostly what we're talking about here-
Yep.
-I think one of the things we would have to consider is, what do we need these buildings to be for the future so we can continue to serve our kids? So, you know, maybe, maybe the closet situation at Holton is resolved now, I'm not sure if it is, but I don't know if I really have a question here, but that's kind of one of the things that's really weighing on me is, is, is it's, it's not just keeping one open and moving forward, we have to invest in these facilities so they can serve our population. I don't know if others have thoughts on that, or, or Nick, if you have anything to add.
Well, I think, you know, when you look at the, like the Holton, like, let's just leave it the way it is, it's perfect, it's fine. Yeah, I think, how long would we go before we say with programming, you know, you share a gym for cafeteria space? They did that for many years at, at North Hudson, and it made it work, but it was, it changed the programming opportunities or what have you, made things more difficult. I would think that, you know, you know, if Holton was left open, at some point, we're going to address that, we have to address that. It does become a scheduling, a programming, maybe even an equity issue. So, I don't know, Nick, maybe you can comment?
Yeah, so, you know-
Well, my point, my point was, there'd be further investments besides maintenance, you know?
Yeah, so, again, it goes through as part of that task force back in 2021, '22, we did look at educational adequacy on some of these things, as Brian, Brian alluded to, and, and the costs ranged, you know? I mean, a lot of what, what you're seeing in the numbers, this 6 million roughly for Holton, the 18 million roughly to 20 million for, for Willow River, was not really addressing educational adequacy, it was addressing maintenance issues. And, and our buildings are very different today, and our needs are very different today than what they were when these buildings were built. And there's expectations of what we're expected to deliver educationally that, that wasn't around in the 1960s, or, in Willow's case, in the, you know, early 1900s. And so, you know, there, there was a variety of, if you go through that report, there's a variety of things that, that, different priorities and educational accuracy was one of them. So, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, when we talked about, you know, why did you add a gym at, at North Hudson, people think it's about sports, well, it's actually about no longer having, when we eat lunch dictate when we teach reading, because when we eat lunch determines when we can have specials, and when we have specials dictates when we can have literacy blocks. And so, by breaking the lunchroom away from the, the gymnasium space, now all of a sudden we can have literacy blocks when they're best for our kids. And, and you have the ancillary benefit of community use and things like that. So, I think sometimes, you know, the whole story doesn't get totally told when it comes to some of those pieces, because, you know, those are, those are important pieces for people to consider, but educational adequacy is, is a piece of it, and there will be people who'll say, I didn't have that when I was in school, I don't need it, or my kids don't need it. And the thing is, that, that may be fine for you and your children, however, that's not necessarily the case for everybody that we serve, and the ranging needs that, that everybody has are, are different. And, you know, and that, those are the, those are the challenges that we have. If you have a child that doesn't have any physical mobility needs, Willow River is probably just fine. If you have a child that has mobility issues, maybe wheelchair-bound, maybe in a walker, all of a sudden a building like Willow River creates some real challenges for that child in getting around that building. And, you know, I mean, so there are, there are a variety of different things that we have to take into consideration, and just because something doesn't impact a child or a family doesn't mean it may not impact other families and, and that educational adequacy piece. Meg, or Erin brought up the point about ADA compliance, if you look through that report, there was a lot of what was happening at Holton that's just not in ADA compliant, it's just, it's not compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act. We haven't had to bring it up to code yet because we haven't done a major remodel with it, but, you know, we're probably not meeting the spirit of the law, or, you know, because it, it doesn't meet those things. And so, there's, there is work that has to be done. I'm not saying we can't do that, I'm just telling you, there is both one-time cost associated with both of those buildings, and there's ongoing cost associated with both of those buildings. That's, that's just the reality of it.
You know, I haven't spoken with Brian about his time on the facility task force, but I, back then I did go to a lot of the meetings, and, you know, I remember very clearly that people were saying, well, you've got too much space, we've just got too much space. And, but they also were like, but I don't believe that, I don't believe this trend in lower enrollment is going to continue. You know, there was that disbelief, that was three years ago. But, thank you for bringing that up, because it, you know, for those that think you're moving too fast, you're not giving it time, you know, you're not looking at, you know, the what-if trends, you know, this was a discussion in 2022, and, and that information, I think, is still relevant.
Mr. President?
Maria?
Kind of piggybacking up on a comment you made about the trends, and we've talked about this, the trends in declining enrollment, the shifts in what's happening in our county and in our towns. I know several of us attended the housing study that the St. Economic Development Corporation put out, they just released their full report today along with community-specific snapshots. I live in the town of Hudson, so I just looked at that snapshot quickly for myself. The median age of a resident in town of Hudson in 2000 was 34 years old. Fast forward to 2020, it was 43 years old. That means we're not bringing in young families if our median age is increasing. The median sale price for housing in Hudson School District increased 8.2% between 2022 and 2024. We went from 425,000 for a median, median sale home price to 460,000. Comparatively in New Richmond, they had a decrease of 10% between 2022 and 2024. They went from 323,000 as a median sale price to 357. I, or increase, sorry, not a decrease, but they, they increased, their increase was less than ours. I think all of this together, I, I would love for this information to be included in that long-term planning, because we continue to say, what is the data? We look at multiple sources, and this is a very recent housing study. It looked not only at, it looked at our entire county, it looked at specific communities within our county. These are not things we can impact, but they impact us and how we think and how we plan. And I think the community should be looking into this report very closely, and talking with your county boards, with your community development, within your towns, about what are we doing, how are we thinking about growth? Because if our schools are our backbone and we need strong schools, we need growth, we need growth of young families, we need affordable housing in our communities to achieve that and continue to see our, our, our school population increase.
Maria, I think that's, though, I mean, that's a great point. I mean, the, the study was just released, I think, today, actually, they, they put out the study, you know, town of St. Joe is an example, in 2020, the average age was 37.4, in 2020, or sorry, in 2000 it was 37.4, in 2020 it's 45.2. 43% of households had kids under the age of 18 in 2000, in 2020 it's dropped to 32%. This is all while the town has experienced a 60% growth in single-family housing units. And I think this is, it's, it's not unique to St., the town of St. Joe, it's not, I mean, it, this is, that stat, and those stats are the same thing in all of our municipalities. Yes, there is tremendous housing growth over those 20 years, and it's not filling, you know, the, it's not filling up with, with young families. And, and I think that's, this is a great data point, if you haven't had a chance to look through it, it was just released today, it's, it is very, very, very extensive. And, and it's not just the city of Hudson. And so the, the tough thing is, when the township of, the township of St. Joe, the township of Troy, because we don't have all of those townships, we only have portions of them, it's hard to totally extrapolate which portions we have, but, and where that, where that lies, but it's, like you said, the town of Hudson, similar type of thing, the, almost the median age across our district is going up eight years. I mean, across the whole district, when you look at, when you look at all of them, so. And that, that creates a real, that creates a real, a real challenge for us. In the city of Hudson, it's gone up seven years, the average household age has gone up seven years, so.
Any other comments or questions?
So, just to follow up on September 22nd, you know, Tracy has kind of captured as we went through the framework, you know, that we, for the 22nd. And so, I don't know, Tracy, if you want to kind of go through your document a little bit and kind of make sure that we have everything captured that we thought we heard you say, and kind of how we're planning to lay it out?
Sorry, I didn't have the document-
Didn't have it up, sorry, that's my fault.
Do you have the title of the document?
Yep, "Community Meeting, September 22nd."
Okay, so, I went ahead based on what everyone was talking about at the previous meeting. So, purpose being to engage families, staff, and community members in meaningful conversations that will provide the Board of Education with broad-based input regarding potential elementary school closures due to declining student enrollment and budget challenges, a welcome and purpose section, providing everybody with common data, the context, and so enrollment trends, budget realities, working tables with three basic conversation prompts lasting about 20 to 30 minutes. One, first prompt being, build common ground, what do you believe is critical to providing educationally for all children in the Hudson School District to succeed now and in the future? What values should guide the Board as it makes difficult decisions? Two, the second prompt, learning about challenges, materials to review regarding budget and enrollment- Two, the second prompt, learning about challenges, materials to review regarding budget and enrollment. After reviewing the budget and enrollment data, what stands out or surprises you? What additional questions do you have about the data or the district's challenges? So surprises, insights, questions for the district, possible impacts. And then the third prompt, feedback for the Board. Given your set of beliefs and understandings of the challenges, what advice would you give the Board of Education as they consider the future of our elementary schools? What are the most important things the Board should keep in mind as they make this, their decision, create key priorities and considerations? So each table would take time to go through those prompts, provide two to three highlights from their conversation, and provide that feedback to the larger group. And the Board would be listening for patterns, values, and common concerns.
Does that, does that kind of capture what you guys were thinking was going to happen? And we have already started receiving quite, quite a few questions, and we're going to be working through to get those categorized and getting some answers so that we can kind of lead off that meeting, as Tracy talked about. So we just want to make sure we're hearing what the Board's asking us to do, and we're, we're meeting you where you'd like us to be.
Mr. President?
Maria?
I know, I noticed the forms up, so there was a, the form was up and people could start sending in, so thank you for that. About how many responses do we have so far?
There are about, well, there's three questions, so there's probably about 25 people who have responded, but multiply that by-
Multiply people, okay, great. So I guess my, and I know, I think I saw something go out through Parent Square, so I appreciate that. Could we just double down on that and ask building principals to send it out in there?
Absolutely.
Ask, send it to the PTOs, like, this has every building, when we are talking about what's happening here, you know, re-boundary potentials is impacting everybody and making sure there's strong awareness and that they get this moment. I don't want people to feel like they've missed an opportunity.
Sure.
Thanks.
Mr. President?
Yes, Brian?
One follow-up on that, we are offering childcare.
Correct.
So if we could just make sure to, to highlight that message as well, so folks know that we've got good, high-quality childcare so that we can get more people out.
Mr. President?
Megan?
Do you have snacks for the children while they're there? Because otherwise they'll, they'll, at least mine would go crazy if there's no snacks.
We can make sure there's snacks.
Oatmeal raisin. Cookies. Okay, there's no other questions? That'll bring us to the end of our board meeting, and I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. President, I make a message to go into closed session. Oh, sorry, I have to read the link, I don't have the link up. Mr. President, I make a motion to convene to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute, paragraph 19.85, paren 1, paren F, when considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories, or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations regarding a former support staff member.
Thank you, Maria, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. We do a voice vote for going into closed session. Dahl?
Aye.
Garza?
Aye.
Gerlock?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Rozowski?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Bowman, aye. We are now in closed session.